Hello.
Hi Commissioner Gray, can you hear me?
I can. Okay.
Commissioner Gray, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. All right, we will welcome you out this morning and call our meeting to order. The first meeting we have is a Board of Prestige meeting for Utah County Service Area Number Eight. To begin this meeting, we will actually start with a public hearing to consider proposed amendments or increases to the 2018 budgetary funds for Utah County Service Area Number Eight. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak for this item? Seeing none, I'll move into the regular agenda portion. On our regular agenda, to note, item number one can actually be stricken. That was on there in air as those minutes were approved at our last meeting for the service area. So I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we strike number one on our regular agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to strike regular agenda item number one. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 It will carry three zero. Next on our agenda is approve the minute for the December nineteenth meeting. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the number two, the amendments for December nineteenth, and I can probably do the minutes for April seventeenth as well.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Sorry.
Second.
Gotcha. Sorry Greg. I have a motion in a second to approve regular agenda items numbers two and three. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion will carry three zero. Next is to look at adopting the resolution amending the budget. There have been some internal discussions and proposals, and it came from our Public Works Department, a recommendation to continue items so we can have some questions answered.
I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing and this agenda for two weeks.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to continue regular agenda item four for two weeks. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 It will carry three zero. One more motion is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It will carry three zero. We will now move into our regular Board of County Commissioners meeting for today as soon as Renee gets us a thumbs up here. All right, we are now going to convene our Board of Utah County Commissioners Board of Commission meeting for May first. We'd like to welcome you all out and appreciate your attendance this morning. To begin with, we typically like to start our meetings with a prayer reading or thought along with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd look to the audience or volunteers who would like to participate in offering that prayer, reading, or thought, or leading us in the pledge. Are there any?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I would take the prayer reading or thought.
Fantastic. Any volunteers for the pledge? We've got... I'll let your arm wrestle. Ralph, you win.
Thumb wrestle.
Okay, we'll go ahead and Phil, if you'll lead us in that.
So today is Loyalty Day. This is a proclamation from our President, and I'd like to read it and then also offer a prayer. "On Loyalty Day, we reflect with humility and gratitude upon the freedoms we hold dear, and we reaffirm our allegiance to our nation and our founding principles. We cherish our system of self-government whereby each American citizen is free to exercise their God-given and inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We honor and defend our Constitution, which constrains the powers of government and allows all of us freely to exercise these rights. We also recognize the great responsibilities that accompany a free people and vow to preserve our hard-woned liberty. For we know, as President Ronald Reagan once said, that 'Freedom is never more than one generation away from existence.'" This Loyalty Day, we remember and honor the thousands of Americans who have laid down their lives to protect and defend our nation's beautiful flag, from those who battled on Bunker Hill to those who sailed at Midway. These brave men and women fought and died to ensure that the United States of America continues to shine as a beacon of hope and freedom around the world. America's light will continue to shine because our government is built on the propositions that government derives its just powers from the consent of the governed, and that government exists for the purpose of protecting the individual rights of its citizens. This makes our nation exceptional. Through devotion and sacrifice, each new generation has preserved these rights for prosperity. It now falls to us to continue this legacy. As we have since our nation's founding, Americans today continue to strengthen the fabric of our nation. The men and women of our armed forces courageously confront our enemies who seek to do us harm and to destroy our ways of life. Our first responders valiantly rush towards danger to save lives and aid those in need, often at great personal risk. Parents and teachers prepare our youth to defend our unique heritage and our rights. Our nation's entrepreneurs and business owners are rewarded by how well they serve others, a remarkable feature of our free market system. The values, virtues, and selfless service that permeate America's life exemplifies our proud loyalty to our country and fellow citizens. To express our country's loyalty to individual liberties and limited government and to the inherent dignity of every human being, the Congress by Public Law eighty-five dash five-two-nine has amended, as designated, May first of each year as Loyalty Day. On this day, we honor the United States of America and those who uphold its values, particularly those who have fought and continue to fight to defend the freedom of our Constitution our Constitution affords us. Now therefore, I Donald J. Trump, President of the United States of America, do hereby proclaim May first, two thousand and eighteen, as Loyalty Day. I call on all Americans to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies in our schools and our public places, including recitations of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, and also call upon all government officials to display the flag of the United States and all government buildings and grounds on that day. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this thirteenth day of April in the end of the year of our Lord, two thousand and eighteen, and the Independence of the United States of America, the two-hundred-and-forty-second. And that's by President Trump. I think that's wonderful that we have a Loyalty Day. I don't know how many of you knew about that, but wonderful words. I'll say a prayer. "Our Heavenly Father, as we come before thee this morning on this wonderful morning, and bask in the freedoms that are ours and given to us, we acknowledge thy hand in all. We acknowledge thy hand in what we so greatly have as individuals and people. We pray for those who defend those freedoms. We pray that we can also be defenders of the same. We thank thee for all whom we truly acknowledge, thy hand in all, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen."
Amen.
Please arise and state the pledge with me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. First up on our agenda this morning is actually the recognition of our May Employee of the Month. And I'll go ahead and I have a letter I'd like to read as we recognize our Employee of the Month. "I'd like to submit Carly Jo Jarvis for Employee of the Month for May. Carly has worked for Utah County for several years in various capacities, beginning as a time-limited employee. During her time with Clerk Auditor's Office, she has worked in elections, marriage, license, and passports, and tax administration. Since coming on full-time, Carly has been an invaluable asset in the elections portion of the office. As a deputy clerk, Carly has always worked hard, put in the extra time, make sure things get done on time and correctly. Her work ethic, pleasant personality, and willingness to serve the citizens of Utah County has earned her the position as our lead elections clerk. Carly does a good job of working with and carrying out all the duties and tasks as assigned. A couple of years ago, she was given the task to handle all the purchasing tasks for elections. She has done an outstanding job of taking care of things in a timely manner and within the spending guidelines of the office. As the lead elections clerk, she has been involved in interviewing of new staff members and helping to coordinate the day-to-day functions of the staff. Whenever she is given an assignment, you know she will get it done. Carly has also promoted an atmosphere of teamwork and friendship around the office. She gets along great with her fellow coworkers and easily associates with all members of the Clerk Auditor's Office. Most importantly, Carly is an outstanding public servant. She is friendly and respectful to the members of the public that come into the office, call on the phone, or email with questions. I have received many compliments about her interactions with the public and her professional demeanor. Please join me in congratulating Carly as our Employee of the Month for May."
Say a few words.
You don't have to. There's a "if you want" there. All right, thank you. All right, we'll now move into our regular agenda for today. To begin with, we will start with a public hearing. This public hearing is to discuss amending and increasing the twenty-eighteen Utah County Budget and the County's General Fund and various other budgetary funds transferring unencumbered or unexpected appropriate balances from one department fund into another department. So are there...we'll open that up. Brian, do you maybe want to make any statement generally just to introduce this concept?
Well, essentially, it came to our attention that there were items that have changed a little bit since we created the twenty-eighteen budget, thus facilitating a need in certain areas. Most of those that have been brought forth are dealing with public works, in particular the Canyon Road Project in Pleasant Grove and Cedar Hills, and then also some additional funding as far as the weeds management. There are some other items that are out there. I believe over the course of the last few days, there's been additional discussion in that. We do have in the packet, I believe you have Exhibit A, which would handle those two main items that we've talked about. And so at this point, I would defer to you to determine what you want to do from there.
Okay. Given we have the public hearing portion, at this point in time, we would open for public comment. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close that public hearing, and then we will address this further as we move into our regular agenda. All right, as we build our agenda, all items will be moved to consent unless held for discussion. Looking at items currently on our consent agenda, we have a stack of them. Looks like we missed a meeting last week. We have thirty-six consent agenda items. I do have a note on one of them. On consent agenda item number eleven, there would be a verbiage change to strike the word municipal. There's any objections to that? Seeing none. Any other additional questions or need to hold anything on consent?
No.
Can we hold seven and eight just for a public comment on those two?
Okay. Seven and eight from consent to hold. Moving to our regular agenda. Starting off with regular agenda items numbers two, three, and four will need to be stricken as the proper documentation unfortunately wasn't on there when those were added to the agenda. I have item number six to be held for discussion, item number eight to be held for discussion, and item number twelve to be held. Any additional?
Could we continue item number five for one week for some more discussion?
I apologize, my agenda's not in front of me, which is five. What does that change to?
That includes the property tax actions, the recommendation letter.
Okay, could we move it for two weeks as where I will be out of town next week and unable to call in?
Oh.
Would that be all right?
Yeah, two weeks.
Okay.
Wait, Paul's got a comment.
Oh, something.
On number five... On number five, some of those might have tax sale implications. So I don't know if Brian wants to take a look at that, or I'm not sure if...because two weeks from today, I guess it's still before the tax sale.
It is, it's actually...
But it's just before.
Two days before the tax sale. So, I don't know, I defer to Bert, if he's still here. If you could just address if there are any of these on here that do have tax sale.
Yeah, there are several on there that are payment agreements that are for the...to pull them off of the tax sale. One is a very large piece that we've already kind of pulled in anticipation of seeing this agreement approved, so it's up to the commission to decide what to do. But yeah, two weeks from today would be two days prior to the sale. We typically like to have all these things done prior to the sale, but if there needs to be something else done, then obviously defer to the wisdom of the commissioners.
Will it work though?
It should, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's...we'll just...it's before the sales, before the sales, so, you know. It'll work.
And then I would ask Mr. Chairman if there are any specific items on this agenda that you're concerned about, if you could just bring that to our attention.
Okay.
And then we can tell you if it's one that's crucial for the tax sale.
Yeah, it works. Any additionals on the regular? Okay, just for clarification, I have from consent that we will be holding for discussion or public comment, consent agenda items number seven and eight. We've stricken regular agenda items two, three, and four. We are continuing five for two weeks, holding six, eight, and twelve for discussion. All right, let's go ahead and move to our consent agenda item number seven. This is a ratification of the resolution adopting the second addendum to the Fifth Amendment in a local cooperation agreement between Utah County and Provo City in relationship to the operation of the Ice Sheet Arena Facility.
Yeah, it's just a comment, it's not going to be a...I just wanted to point this out in our meeting, instead of allowing to go through consent, that this does deal with our Ice Sheet agreement that we made there. It was a celebration moment for us and Provo City, and I just wanted to point that out for the, you know, for the record, that we're ratifying this resolution as we've already went through the process of getting this accomplished. There's two on there just for an extension period in which allows us to do this, and I just wanted to...you know, it was one of those celebration times for the county and for Provo City, and I wanted to make sure and mention that in our meeting.
Perfect. All right, any additional comment on those? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for seven and eight.
I'll make a motion that we ratify the resolutions as stated in both seven and eight on our consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to ratify consent agenda items number seven and eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It will carry three zero. Next, we have in our regular agenda, we have regular agenda item number five. This was to look at abating the rollback taxes for property serial number...
Number six.
Oh, excuse me, six. I know there was some question on this.
Would you like me to start?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I put it on there?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, so this is when all three of us commissioners go to BOE, Paul Jones tells us, well, we don't have a decision to make. So I know that we're in the process, and we talked about it in our work session last time, of a resolution, and talking with...and I'll allow him to obviously come up and speak. The assessor did say that he believes...I thought I heard him say that this would fall under the resolution because it did meet the production requirements, blah, blah, blah. And again, I'm sure Chris is there or somebody that can speak to that. The reason I put it on there this way is because, to me, there's all sorts of problems with this. On the notice that he got for the rollback, this property owner, there's a statement in bold in the middle, and it reminds me of the notice that we had speaking of our tax sale, when we had to turn back over four hundred thousand dollars because of a date and a time and a thing. And when he came to the BOE, this particular person, they talked about how, yeah, if they waited till rollback, and then they came and they thought there was an appeal that they could do, and that...so they were following what was in bold. And so for me, I think we need to either look at that language or whatever. So again, Paul Jones tells us we have no opportunity to roll back these taxes. In BOE, there's no decision. Now, the reason I put this on here is because I also pointed out in BOE, and in an effort to be consistent in the county, my problem with this one is really that when we find them after a hundred and twenty days, we're all in agreement that a hundred and twenty days, the green belt people need to be in compliance. However, what is happening internally is whether it's three hundred days, six hundred days, nine hundred days, which trust me, there are plenty of all of those, when our staff, our excellent staff sends them a letter, if they come in and take care of them, then they allow them to go back on green belt, and the commission is not getting a chance, but yet we're asking to enforce it. And so to me, it sounds like there's an opportunity for us to be consistent. So the irony in this one, and the reason I put this on for abatement, is because he is in production, he does plan on filing under our new resolution after discussion to be put back on green belt immediately and improve the production for whether we go to two years or five years, depending on wherever that goes. And this allows us the opportunity, because he was in production, to not punish somebody who was actually doing it. Because had he come in, rather than doing the appeal process that he has done numerous times and been granted by the county, not this commission but previous commissions, had he just gone into the office, he would have been put back on green belt and put in compliance. But because he chose to do it this way, in essence, he's being punished in a different way that we have done. And so I wanted to give us an opportunity to weigh in on this, rectify this, and put it back into the consistent way that the county has done it. So that's why this is here.
Thank you. Chris, would you have a clarification, your thoughts there?
Chris Paulson, County Assessor. The resolution that was referred to will be on next week's agenda. And based on that, I would recommend that the commission actually continue this for one week. That way, you could determine if the resolution is something you want to adopt or not, and then address this after that point in time.
Okay, I would again ask, and it's unfair of me, I mean, I did let everybody know I was doing this vacation six months ago or longer, but I would ask that if we could continue it all for two weeks, as long as the property owner is okay with that and the assessor, because I would like to also weigh in on that amendment, if that would be okay.
What's two weeks...I mean, I know what two weeks is going to give us in the way of the proposal, but part of that proposal is that they get back on green belt and show back, you know, for two years of production, so how do we do that all at the same time?
We can show that the application has been submitted and accepted at that point in time.
But we couldn't actually do any...we couldn't do any, in essence, deferral until we've gone through the process, is what...
And that's part of what we've talked about, that the property actually does qualify for green belt and qualified production-wise through the entire period in question.
How long does it take to go through that process of production and establishing production?
I believe in this case, because of the Board of Equalization, that issue was discussed, and we can go back to the minutes, and there was no objection to the...or any question to the production element. It was for that two-year period. Production in that case was always present, is what was determined in Board of Equalization. What was not present was the change in ownership...
Right.
...and the deadline to meet the change in ownership reapplication.
So I don't necessarily remember definitively that production was established. I think it was talked about, but not established that there, production was actually there. I don't know how we determined that it was there.
I think what was actually stated was the production is not in question because...and we can look at the minutes, but I believe it was stated that there was not an issue with production during that period of time.
Yeah, because the other one trumped it.
Right.
In that case, yeah, that was the conversation. While you're coming up on Paul on that, I would think that there needs to be some sort of separation between our resolution that we're possibly talking about and then establishing what that production looks like, or how we establish what that is, instead of having it on the same day. I don't know how we'd do that.
Paul Jones, Utah County Attorney's Office, is that Greg?
Sorry, Paul, can I weigh in real quick?
Yep, absolutely.
Just because I may get cut off here. Commissionally, I don't disagree with you. That's why I actually put it on in this way, because the resolution, and so for this one, I know Paul, I read Paul's comments and everything on this, but the reality is, is I agree with you. But to me, there's a difference between a Board of Equalization decision and a commission decision. For us, what I put on the agenda before us is, we've just heard from the assessor, he does not believe there to be a production issue. Whether they go back on green belt will be a production issue. That's why I have put on here, not to defer the taxes, to abate the taxes, because again, we have somebody who is actually complying with everything but the notice because they changed it, the zoning, they didn't do it. But for them coming in and fixing that, even well after the hundred and twenty days... But for them coming in and, and fixing that, even well after the 120 days, uh, when they got the letter from Diane, rather than going through the appeal process, they would not have even had these rollback taxes at all. And that's why I believe we should be abating them.
The only comment I was gonna make is that, uh, my understanding of the proposed resolution is that the, the verification of production is, um, is verified by their virtue of getting back into green belt. So, that, um, when we have these issues at BOE, these, these items where they're rolled back because they didn't apply within 120 days of a name change or a legal description change, production's not an issue, um, at that time. They could be, they could have all the production in the world and still get rolled back, um, under that clause of the green belt law. And so, uh, sometimes production is discussed, because they, they wanna come in and say, hey, we're producing and we're farmers, but it's not actually an element at issue. And so, my understanding of the resolution that will probably be on next week is, um, that the way we know that they're in production is that they, is that they apply for green belt, to get back into green belt, and they get accepted back in. And to get accepted back in, you have to show two years' worth of production, and that's done through the assessor's office. Now, uh, there's been discussion about having them, um, prove all five years they were in production, and there's been some discussion about just two. And so, I'm not even sure where the commission is on that, but, um, but at the very least, the way that they would show that they're in production is by getting back into green belt, and that would be the way that they would show that they have at least two years.
And for, for me, it makes sense that we, for sure, continue these two item, well, the one's not on the agenda, but this item, and make sure we address that resolution as we look at this, so that they're both in compliance together. And I'm, I'm perfect, I really appreciate the opportunity to have Greg weigh in, so I, the two weeks would be fine for me, because I don't think there's a time-sensitive nature there.
Let's see, I'm just looking at a calendar here. So, two weeks. That's the fourteenth? Fifteenth?
To provide them separate.
I just was looking at that.
We could do three weeks.
I'd prefer the three weeks.
That's fine.
I'll put this right before, anyway. Uh, well, I'd like to make a motion if.
All right, we're gonna entertain it.
I would, I would like to make a motion that we continue, uh, item number six for three weeks.
Second.
A motion and a second to continue regular agenda item number six for three weeks. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion will carry three, three, zero. I will now move to regular agenda item number eight. This is to receive the recommendations of the top two proposals for an RFP. This RFP was in relation to special legal counsel for our opioid litigation. The year was a fantastic review board that sat through some, some important presentations and have come back to us with a recommendation. Uh, their number one recommendation was John Jones Waldo, and number two was Motley Rice. I would, uh, Dave, would you maybe like to just comment a little bit about the process and how these two were arrived at, and the thoughts of the committee?
Sure. We, uh, reviewed, the committee met and reviewed all of the, uh, applications, and we then narrowed it down to four, and then we scheduled oral interviews, and those were held over a period of two days. And following the review of all of the applicants, uh, the committee determined that these were the top recommendations, these two law firms, each of which is also associated with, uh, uh, National Counsel that has significant experience with regard to opioid litigation, and each of which is also involved with the, uh, multi-district litigation, so that they are intricately involved in the process and the, uh, expected path that this will take. And, uh, we've, we have, the committee believes that each of these would be able to provide quality service, legal services to the county with regard to the opioid issue.
All right, thank you. I know, uh, reviewing the comments in both, these definitely look like very qualified firms. Uh, one of the major questions was their flexibility in where to handle this lawsuit, whether it was a federal or state lawsuit, and it sounds like they're both able to go in the direction we would direct. And also, my understanding, for clarification, this gives us today the opportunity to send you to formal negotiations to establish a contract with one of them, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We still would have to go through that process, so that they would not officially be retained until that process is completed. That would just, uh, this provides the direction as to how you would like us to proceed with regard to that final negotiation of a contract.
Perfect. Additional thoughts or comments on this?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to sit through some presentations on this, and I think that, that we got a good group of, of companies that came in, uh, legal firms that came in and looking at, um, at this for us. It's an important issue for our county, uh, as we, as we move forward with it. I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh, with the number one pick that's on there, um, as we, uh, since that's, that's the recommendation, and also I had the opportunity to, to sit through that, that one as well, and, and look at what they're trying to accomplish. It will be a policy decision on where we go, which, which court we actually go to. And so, we'll have, we'll have to go through and designate how we go through the, uh, the negotiation process with them and, and, and work out kind of the finer details with it. But I'm, I'm personally comfortable with the, with the number one recommendation.
Commissioner Graves, any thoughts? I know he mentioned he thought he might drop, so. Commissioner Graves? I'll assume we have lost contact with Commissioner Graves. Uh, given that, I will suspend the rules for the meeting, allowing me to second any additional motions, unless we get him back on the line. Uh, at this point in time, I would happily consider a motion on regular agenda item number eight.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, we have received in the recommendation of the top two proposals for the RFP, the 2018, um, for the special legal counsel service related to potential opioid litigation, recommend a proposal to fur- for further negotiation of award of the contract to, and to, and to enter those negotiations with the John Jones Waldo, uh, law firm.
I will second that. I have a motion and a second, uh, to enter negotiations as outlined in regular agenda item number eight with Jones Waldo. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry two, zero. We will now go ahead and look to regular agenda item number twelve. Uh, this is to look at approving, adopting a resolution, amending our, uh, budget. Uh, as was discussed at the beginning of the meeting, this is a, a need that has arisen, and been brought to our attention specifically in relationship to some projects that we are working on. Brian, any additional thoughts that you had, other than what you'd mentioned before?
No, uh, the only thing I'll point out is, uh, there is the option to go ahead and, particularly on the Canyon Road project and the weeds, uh, for you to go ahead and adopt, uh, those items, um, today. And then, uh, for the additional items that are gonna be discussed, uh, then just do a reopening down the road. So, that's one of the options for you to consider.
Okay. Commissioner Lee, thoughts?
Um, I'm prepared to, uh, to adopt the, uh, the resolution with the, there's, uh, uh, $2.6 million in additional funds that, that has been for the one for the roads and the other one for the weeds, for, for public works, for, for projects that, uh, we knew were coming, the two thousand, the two thousand, the two million, which was only two thousand. It's basically a pass-through, uh, pass-through that is needed, necessary for that project, as we've been working with the cities on that one. So, that one's, that one's a, a pass-through account. The, the weed one's a little bit different, so I'm prepared now to, to adopt, uh, the resolution.
Feel comfortable with it myself. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, the, uh, the resolution amending the increase to the 2018 Utah County budget as stated in number twelve on our agenda.
I will second that motion. I have a motion and a second to adopt regular agenda item number twelve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that will carry two, zero. We do not have a need for regular agenda items thirteen and fourteen, but we do fifteen and sixteen.
I'll make a motion that, that we strike items number thirteen and fourteen on our regular agenda.
I will second that. All those in favor, I have a motion and a second to strike regular agenda items thirteen and fourteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries two, zero.
I'll make a motion to approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual or individuals, at this location following the completion of our regular agenda.
For today's date?
Yes.
Okay, I will second that. I have a motion and a second to approve regular agenda item fifteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that will carry two, zero.
I'll make a motion that we approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting for a strategy session to discuss the pending and reasonable imminent litigation for today's date at this location following the completion of our regular agenda.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve regular agenda item sixteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion will carry two, zero. We now have a work session scheduled. This is a presentation from Eagle Mountain Redevelopment Agency about their new community reinvestment area. Uh, we'd invite them forward at this time.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Efo Peely. I'm the city administrator for Eagle Mountain City. I just wanna recognize our, our mayor, uh, Tom Westmoreland, he's here, he's asked me to, to kinda give a brief introduction, and then we have our economic development director, Aaron Sanborn, and our financial consultant, economic development consultant, Rob Sant, uh, with Lewis Young Robertson in Burningham. And, and they'll be giving the details of the presentation. I just want to, as, as far as giving the present, uh, a brief introduction, uh, the reason why we wanted to come here before we, we come for a proposal and get on a work session is, uh, th- this is a unique project, um, and, and our ask is unique, and there may be some cause for, for concern or discussion on what we're asking, but I wanted to just briefly explain why we're asking this, and just the scope and magnitude of the project. Uh, this project potentially will be the biggest project, uh, power-wise, tax increment-wise, to ever land in the state of Utah. Now, this is, as, you know, I've talked to, to, uh, to the Commissioners over the years, and, um, we've been, this is something the city of Eagle Mountain's been preparing for, for the last decade. We've been, um, with the sale of our utilities and putting ordinances in place that specifically attract data centers. And this is what this is, it's a, it's a data center. And the first phase is, of this project is, is close to billion dollars. Uh, what they would like us to, to do is prepare for ten phases for this one project. Within the data center world, uh, other data centers like to co-locate, and we also have others that we're talking, that are talking to us now, uh, billion-dollar investments, and, uh, you know, I'm leading off with some, some great figures, and, uh, normally this would be a no-brainer. I mean, I, I, we come here and maybe a little swagger, saying that, hey, we got the, we're the cash cow of the county now if we land this. But there are some asks that they're, uh, that, that are different than probably everything, anything you've ever asked for. And, and one particular is they wanna zero out the property tax, uh, personal property tax. It's about fifty-fifty split on their investment, so with an investment of about a billion dollars, they wanna zero out, uh, five hundred thousand would be the personal, and then the real would remain. And the reason for that is, is, uh, data centers have to refresh, and they would be disincentivized to, to, to do that. Uh, their, their equipment is so expensive that they'd be disincentivized to do that because of the depreciation, um, factor. And so, uh, they don't normally, you know, the state of Utah hasn't received a project like this before, because, uh, in other states, uh, they don't have the personal property tax, uh, for, for developments like these. Uh, that's one. The other is an eighty-twenty is what they want. They want eighty, eight, they want eighty-twenty, uh, for twenty years. And if they're going to, to commit to ten phases of potentially billion-dollar per phase, uh, they don't wanna have to be coming back every time. They want, they don't wanna be disincentivized to, 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 you know, to grow. And so, um, th- those are some unique asks from, from a company like this. But this, this is something, uh, Commissioners, that we've been very excited about, and, and really been, we, we have an ordinance in place, uh, an industrial overlay zone that allows data centers to come in and receive their excavation permit, as soon as they, they say they wanna come. And we've removed a lot of red tape, and there's so many things that have gone through this over the years. We've actually worked with state legislature, uh, the state legislature over the years to provide, sorry, uh, over the years to, to make it more viable for these types of projects to come to the state of Utah. And so, we're, we're really excited about this, and, and, um, we, we wanted to get on an agenda before we come, so that if there are any concerns or any issues that we can, um, you know, we can have some time to discuss it. Uh, if it all goes well, uh, the, they, they wanna make an announcement by the end of the month. If, and so, we are on a tight, uh, timeline, and, um, and so, we wanted to be able to come in, have enough time to, to meet with you, and, and be able to resolve any concerns that we have. But, uh, i- if I can turn some time over to Rob, I think Rob will be presenting some of the details of, of the deal, and then, uh, we'll just go from there.
So, thanks for the chance to come speak to you, Commissioners. As Efo mentioned, I'm Rob Sant. Uh, I work for Lewis Young Robertson in Burningham, and we are the financial advisors and consultants for the, both the city and the redevelopment agency. I, I sent a electronic copy of this PowerPoint, but I also made some hard copies, if you'd like to see those.
And you're okay with these being public documents?
Yes.
Okay.
So, as Efo mentioned, this has kind of been a, a long, uh, work in, in progress. Something else that, that he's mentioned in, um, talking with us is, Eagle Mountain's really unique in their location is, um, based off of market research and other things. They're not ideal for most office users and, uh, retail users, uh, just because of their location and, um, their distance from, from public transit. But they did, um, discover in this market study that they're a prime location for these data centers. Um, so that's kinda why they've been focusing on that. So, if we could just turn to page five. So, this just kinda shows the location of the proposed community reinvestment area. It's in the south, I'd probably say the, the southwest portion of the city. It's 487 acres. Uh, the city kind of envisions that this will be kind of a, a data center industrial park. So, we envision that there'll be the future data centers that Efo spoke of will be, um, not included in this 487 acres. But the reason why we wanted to just include this area is this ask is unique to this, um, company. And so, we didn't wanna include 2,000 acres and have everybody that comes in get that 100%, 80%. Um, these kind of, these are kind of the first, since these are the first, um, company to locate in this area, it's green belt right now. So, they're gonna have to build the water infrastructure, the electricity infrastructure, and then, um, because it's a data center, the fiber infrastructure. And a lot of the infrastructure they, they build will be able to be used by future da- future data centers. So, we think that, um, as we talk with other data centers, we'll be more traditionally in that 60-40 split, the 70-30 split that we usually see in these project areas. So, then on page seven, this is kinda just a breakdown of, um, what is kinda- So then on page seven, this is kind of just a breakdown of what is kind of the development assumptions. So it's going to be, the first two phases will be nine hundred and seventy thousand square feet. The data center will be nine hundred thousand square feet, and the office will be seventy thousand square feet. With the building value, the incremental land value and the personal property value, we have it that will be assessed at seven hundred and fifty million. It could be assessed up to a bill- a billion dollars depending on how it's assessed. Kind of what we do in our process is we look for comparable values, comparable assessed values. There's not a lot of data centers in Utah right now. So we actually had to kind of go out into other states, Arizona, Oregon, North Carolina, kind of wherever we could find these data centers. And their assessed values were anywhere from a hundred and eighty-seven dollars a square foot up to four hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. So depending on how they're assessed, that value could jump up to the billion dollars. Page eight, this has the request that Efo briefly mentioned. So it's a twenty-year project area. And then we're asking for a hundred percent of the personal property. And as Efo mentioned, it's typically when a a development comes in, we see them that the the personal property depreciates ten, fifteen years. They're going to reinvest every three to five years. And so because of that, they've asked for that big number to kind of help offset that reinvestment. Other counties we've worked with in the state, specifically Salt Lake County, they just passed a new policy that states that they're willing to give a hundred percent of the personal property to try to get these big users that bring a lot of personal property tax into the state. And then we'll be asking for eighty percent of the real property and centrally assessed property. Page ten. So this shows what the property is currently generating in taxes. So you have four, almost five hundred acres of property that's greenbelt. So right now, it's producing about sixty-six dollars a year. So the county's portion is five dollars. So over that twenty-year period, it'll produce roughly fifteen hundred dollars in property taxes. Page eleven. This shows the twenty percent of the incremental real property taxes that will remain with the taxing entities. So annually, it'll go up from sixty-six dollars to eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And over a twenty-year period, we're about seventeen million dollars. The county's portion jumping up to fifty-eight thousand a year for one point one million over the twenty-year. And then page twelve. This has the amount of of tax increment that will be passed through to the agency to use for the budget. So you're at about six point seven million dollars annually with a hundred and thirty-three million dollars over that twenty-year. The county being forty-six or four hundred and sixty thousand a year. So page thirteen. This kind of shows a a visual graph of how the property tax will work. So you notice there's four boxes. There's a purple box, a green box, a red box, and a blue box. The blue box is that base year value of sixty-six dollars, but it doesn't show on the on the graph since we're talking about a a six million dollar a year difference. The green, that represents that twenty percent that will remain with the taxing entities. The purple is the money that will go to the RDA. And you notice that it depreciates every five years, and that's because the personal property's on that depreciation schedule by the tax commission. But every five years, they'll reinvest and go back up to that five hundred million dollar number, and it'll depreciate every five years. And then the red box, that is when the project area expires after twenty years, and that money will all flow through back to the taxing entities. So page fourteen, this shows how tax increment will be used in the project area. And that's another thing that the re- that the redevelopment agency wanted to do, is typically in these redevelopment agencies take about a five percent cut for administration. But with this being such a large project, they didn't really need to do that. So there's going to cap it at five thousand dollars annually. So over a twenty-year period, it will be a hundred thousand dollars for administration operations. With CRAs, when they changed the law to have all project areas, we used to have community development areas, economic development areas, and urban renewal areas. And in twenty sixteen, they changed the law and made them all community reinvestment areas. And part of that law change is there's no mandatory housing requirement for CRAs, which is ten percent of the tax increment. The city's still deciding what they want to do with that ten percent. And it's pretty broad what you could use it for. You could use it for building infrastructure that benefits affordable housing. You could use it for new affordable housing. You could use it to improve your existing affordable housing. And you could also pass it along to other housing authorities in in Utah. So you could pass along to the state, to the county, and they're kind of still deciding how they want to best utilize that housing requirement. So the next steps. So we're right now, we have a public hearing set for May fifteenth for the agency to approve the plan and budget. As Efo mentioned, there is kind of a tight timeframe. So we've had initial conversations with all the taxing entities. And our hope is to come for approval for the county on May fifteenth, but hopefully sometime in May if if that date would not work. And there were also, we have a goal to have the school district approve the agreement that date, the fire district, and then Central Utah, they meet a couple weeks after that. So any questions?
Yeah, a question for you on page twelve. The Unified Fire Service Area for Salt Lake County?
Yes.
You talked that, talked about that.
So they they're about the the taxing entity or about the?
Yeah, because it has it has them with, you know, one million dollars a year, and then the twenty million or twenty-one million dollars on a twenty-year total. And so, I mean, I know that's that's who the fire.
So they?
Right now. If that ever changes in the future, would that would that change if you were to go with your own fire department or something of that nature? How would that how would that work out?
So I'm, we would have, I know with like with prior school districts that have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm actually the district administrator for Unified Fire Service Area as well. They they would obviously have that obligation, and the only alternative would be the city, as you mentioned. And and in that case, the city would would have that come back to us. You know, you make a good point, though. It it's not currently in our interlocal agreement. And really, it's it's really the company that would would ma- maybe suggest that for their own protection with that, because we're not, technically, we're not committed to, if that were to dissolve, we weren't, we're not committed to that. But I'm sure they would want the protection in there. So.
Yeah, all right.
One thing, commissioners, that I felt to mention is that, you know, I know Commissioner Lee, we've spoken spoken some time, and I know the way you think now. You go straight to the ROI. And so what we did before we did any anything was we commissioned a study, a fiscal impact study. We commissioned Dr. Larry Walters, who does studies like this throughout the world, really, and we had him do a study for us. And his main goal in the study was to find out what the fis- obviously, the fiscal impact. We didn't want to want him to talk about benefit. We didn't want him to net it out. We know what the benefits are. We want him to talk costs, what those true costs were, and compare cities throughout the country. And he came back with well over a thousand percent return on investment for this for this first phase. And he he, that thousand comes from him just putting a number, because it was so it was so minimal as far as an impact. The data centers typically don't don't bring a whole lot of jobs. So that's unfortunate in some some ways. Some people look at that as as not a real economic development benefit. You know, when I say not a lot, maybe maybe seventy jobs, seventy to a hundred jobs per phase, which is which is a significant amount, but not not enough to put any impact on our services to the county, school district, the city, Unified Fire Service Area. And I think we we emailed a copy of that fiscal impact study. But that study shows well over a thousand percent return on this investment for this, even with this ask of of the increment.
Yeah, and I know you prob- I don't know if you, what you can talk about and what you can't. But that ROI that you're talking about is more than just in in dollar figures as we have talked. And I'm not, I'm going to be careful in what I say, but there 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 are some other areas, you know, for the county at large that is beneficial. I'll just put it that way.
Absolutely.
Safe enough.
Thank you.
Yeah, and with that ROI too, we we don't just look at the property tax that's being generated and what would be generated. We we look at public safety, public works. We look at all those factors. And usually, and I don't have the number right in front of me, but Paul from Eagle Mountain, he mentioned that for residential units, you're looking about, it's about a dollar thirty or dollar something per square foot. And with with industrial uses, you're more about sixty cents per square foot for expenses. So overall, these industrial parks are, they don't cost a lot of of general government expenditures to to operate. So.
No, I'll ask, because I always ask this question when it comes to tax increment financing. And that is, because we've seen in the past where the numbers are given upfront, and then so far into the project, they're never, they never materialize. And that's always a fear. And we've seen that happen in this county where we went all the way to the twenty-year, and then there was a bailout and and left. And so how how do, how, if if there's if there's an investment that goes in there, looking at that ROI, how do we feel comfortable that that's going to continue or that 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 benefit will be realized in the short term and the long-term basis?
You know, Commissioner, what's interesting about these data centers is that we really, the reason why the ROI is so high is because there's really no investment on our part. There's, we're, they're not asking for us to put in any infrastructure ourselves. They're running all the infrastructures. They're paying all infrastructure. They're paying all the impact fees. They're paying for their water. And so so they're not really asking the city to do a whole lot, even from the the fire service. We don't need to increase staff. We don't need a ladder truck to come. And so as we looked at all these factors, if they if it weren't to materialize, the city wouldn't really be out anything as far as upfront. And, you know, some of the things that we we do want to, we're not, as Commissioner Lee alluded to, we're not allowed to really speak much about at this point just because of their, the nature of this company and who they are. But essentially, their upfront costs that they're going to, they're going to invest to to just get this off off and going is about a hundred million dollars right out the gate in infrastructure, in power, working with Rocky Mountain Power. To give you, to give you an idea, the the city of Eagle Eagle Mountain peaks at about thirty megawatts. And they've had conversations with Rocky Mountain Power in the hundreds of megawatts. And if this, if we can, if this thing can materialize and others come in, opening up the valley to even thousands of megawatts. And and that's all on their dime. And so the city isn't isn't on the hook for anything.
Thank you. Well, and that's something else, too, to answer your, further answer your question, that we've noticed a lot of taxing entities are doing. And what we, a lot of times, we propose for our agencies to do that we help is to include in in the participation group with the developers some safeguards. So put a line in there that they only get the tax increment that they generate. And then also put some benchmarks that, you know, we're we're going to trigger tax increment at this year. So every year that you don't build, that's money you're losing. So a lot of times, we add those kind of benchmarks and safeguards, and it helps ensure that we kind of hold the developers' feet to the fire.
This is the base year? This is, is this the base year that you're looking at?
So the, like.
Base year?
Will be, yeah, the sixty-six dollar, that's two thousand and seventeen's the base year. And then I think in the interlocal agreement, or and in the plan, it says that I I believe we have a two to four, a window to trigger. We'll we'll trigger no later than twenty twenty-one. So I believe what the interlocal agreement says. Sure.
We're just, Commissioner Graves is trying to cop back in.
Perfect.
Hello?
Hi, Commissioner, are you able to come back on?
I am. Okay.
Okay, you can continue. Sounds like we have Commissioner Graves back on the line.
Okay. So we're just to the question portion. So.
Okay, ask mine.
I think we're out of questions.
Perfect.
So Commissioner Graves, you have any questions for the Eagle Mountain Redevelopment?
I do. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Graves, if you'd like to, I can leave my email. And if you you have any questions, I'm more than willing to to answer those as well.
I appreciate it. I will probably reach out to you either later this afternoon or tomorrow to follow up with you.
Perfect. Thanks so much. And thank you, commissioners.
No, thank you very much. Appreciate your time coming in. All right. That will conclude the regular portion of our meeting. We will have a moment for general public comment if there is any.
Thank you. I'm Robert Stevens. I live in Provo. I have a question. I guess they're gone now. So I'm also a member of the board of the IT Department at BYU. And and data centers use enormous amount of power. And and to generate that kind of power makes enormous amount of 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 air pollution unless it's going to be a clean energy. So when you calculate the return on investment, you need to see how that's going to impact us if if the quality of our air will suffer because of that. I'd like to discuss subdivisions again, and hopefully, this is the last attempt at this. And you've all heard this. You know, to because of the policies of the county over the years, there are ten thousand residents who live outside of the incorporations, outside of the incorporated cities. There are six hundred and six thousand citizens who live in the county. So the result of that has been that ninety-eight percent of the population has to compete for four percent of land, which creates a problem in supply and demand, which which is partially responsible for the drastic increase of prices of housing, which is driving a lot of our our youth to have to move out of the area because they can't afford housing. When the average, medium salary in the county is like sixty-four thousand dollars, but the the medium house price is over quarter million. You know, and we all say, well, we that we like farmland, and we like greenery. So ideally, what is happening here is as the population is increasing, what we have right now is a number of farms is is being relatively flat. And you want that to increase in parallel with the number of increase in population. I don't know if I should turn this around, if anybody else sees it or not. Or, yeah, so here's what we have now in population. Here's a number of farms, and they're flat. We're not seeing a lot of farms which are developing. In my experience, it's because the county regulations require that a house has to connect into a paved city or, I mean, the state or county road. So this is allowed, and this isn't allowed. In this situation, this lot, in in this lot share a border, and so they can just hook their driveways right into the main road through their own land. In this situation, where you have interior road that is proposed, this guy has to hook his driveway into a portion of the road, and that's not allowed. Okay? Why is that not allowed? Well, that's not allowed because of the policies of previous leaders, they didn't want any new development in the county as they wanted it to be done by the cities. So what are some of the solutions for that? Well, you can allow, uh, private roads. You can allow roads to be built in phases. You can recognize some contracts to, between private individuals that if they have to share a portion of their road, that they'll maintain it and so forth. And, and lastly, you can allow subdivision approval before the developer's able to go pave the road. It's a chicken egg thing, it's hard to raise the money for the road until you get subdivision approval and sell off some lots. And then when you do get the money, you can afford to go pave the roads. In my situation, I've been held up for subdivision approval now for nineteen months on two lots, uh, because of the twelve feet, feet, uh, feet, feet, uh, feet of pavement. So here's seven three hundred South, and we've paved a total of sixty-three feet here, a thirty-six of that's owned by UDOT. And twelve is all that is needed for a house to have their driveway, uh, through here so they can go and connect onto the main road. Uh, once we get subdivision approval for these two lots, we can pave the entire three-quarter mile road, which we've already spent a couple hundred thousand dollars in gravel, it's about six inches of gravel. So, um, if you want the number of farms to, to increase, you have to think of it in terms of, we're not going to have large ones anymore, we're just going to have small ones. If a person has a five and a quarter acre lot, and a quarter acre is for their house, and five is for their farm, if they're, if they want their taxes to be in the green belt, then they have to farm it. Um, so, um, you know, there, it's estimated now that there are about six hundred startups in the valley, but there are probably no startups in farming, uh, because it's impossible to go out and buy the land now and build, uh, because of section three eleven in your regulations. Uh, so I request that you revisit this and you decide if you want to have new farms, uh, to, um, to, um, appear and increase over time. And if you'll also consider that, um, uh, we've been held up now for nineteen months, and the Jordans who own a parcel have been held up for even longer. Uh, they bought a parcel that was approved as soon as we started the road in a phase, the, the county said, you're no longer approved. And so, to the Jordans, he's a plumber, his family has just been, uh, struggling now for over a couple of years because they can't get subdivision approval more, anymore. Do you have anything you want to ask about this?
So why, when you came in and talked with me, we talked about moving that boundary over so that the road was all on one parcel. Why, why can't that work?
Uh, we have, we have paved the road already for sixty-three feet, and we don't really want to go change anything.
No, it's not changing the road, it's just moving the, because there was a, there was this thought of, of combining the parcels together.
Oh, yeah.
But why not move, why, why not move that one boundary all the way over to the edge of the road? So that you have, so that, because the concern is, is that if you sell the parcels, then you don't have control of the road anymore.
Yeah.
If it's in the middle of the road, but why not move the boundary over to the edge of one of the roads?
So one of the parcels would really get subdivision approval, is that what you're saying?
So you could get subdivision approval for both, for, for at least for both those, those, uh, those lots?
Um, I don't understand what you're saying. Uh, um, so one of the ideas has been, uh, to revert and go back into this situation where we remove the interior road, expand to the sides of each lot, and get subdivision approval, sell the lots, build the houses, and then they all go and agree to sign an agreement saying, we'll now reduce the size of our parcels and allow that road to go through again.
Right.
But you're saying?
Why not move that line over to one side? So, of the, the, so take that one on the right, that parcel on the right, instead of having the, the line going right down the middle of the road, have the line go down at the edge of the road so that all the control of that one road is in the, is in the, is in the parcel on the right side. And then, then when you build it, um, you can get subdivision approval for the other, for the other side, sell it and finish your road.
If you'd allow that to happen, um, so far, uh, what happens is I, you know, I talked to Brandon Larson, he asked Robert, or, you know, your attorney, and Robert says, well, our ordinances don't allow that. And so, and it's going to have to submit a three hundred dollar request for a new regulation or change of the regulations. If you'll go and, uh, hold a meeting and discuss this and see what, uh, what you'll allow, then I'll be happy to submit a three hundred dollar request for the change in your regulations or just some kind of exemption or whatever you need me to do. But, um, you know what, um, uh, my level of comfort at this point to go borrow a couple hundred thousand dollars and, and pave that road is, is just not good. Uh, we have a buyer right now, and they're just waiting on subdivision approval. So if you'll discuss this among yourselves and feel free to give me a call and I'll come in, um, uh, but I really think after you solve it for us, you really should solve it for the rest of the county. You know, o- or the population's going to continue to increase, and the number of farms will just stay level, a- and more and more of the citizens will have to fight uh, for the four percent of remaining land, and prices will continue to just go up and up.
I'll have that conversation.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rupert would like to have these things so you, no?
Robert, Renee would like those, please. Renee could use those for the minutes? Thank you, is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move into our closed meetings.